Excellent. All right. Good evening. I would like to call the March 19, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seeing as they don't have any announcements this evening, is there anyone here for anything that is not currently on our agenda? Seeing as none, we can move right into item number one, which is poll petitions number 278-65752 for Hemlock Street and 277-59264 for Walnut Street with possible votes. This is the first one, right? So the Massachusetts Electric Company requests permission to erect and maintain poles, wires to be placed thereon together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said company may deem necessary in the following public way or ways. Walnut Street. They will install a new solely-owned pole number 27-1 in public right-of-way for service to new house located at 115 Walnut Street. Do I have to do the last part of this too, Susan?
Praise.
Wherefore I praise that after due notice and hearing provided by law, it be granted a location for permission to erect and maintain poles, wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary, said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith marked Massachusetts Electric Company, Plan Number 277-59264 dated 2/28/2019. The petitioner agrees to reserve space for one crossarm to, at a suitable point of each said poles for fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used exclusively for municipal purposes. Do we have someone from National Grid here?
Yeah.
Any thoughts on just, can we do them both together?
I put them in under the same time so we don't have to wait in between, but you do one at a time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. I apologize, my voice is a little hoarse this evening. My name is Michael Parent. I am a senior designer for National Grid, Hopdale, Massachusetts. I'm not sure which, especially you want to handle first, the tree guy?
We're doing Hemlock Street first.
Okay.
Walnut Street.
We'll do Walnut Street first.
I'm sorry.
Walnut Street.
I'm reading it off the agenda.
Well, it's in my packet, it's Walnut Street first.
Sorry.
We're gonna fight tonight, Susan.
I'll keep her in line.
All right.
So the Walnut Street pole is to bring service to that house at 115. We have two poles that are currently across the street that don't easily service that house, especially for the distance, so we have to bring a pole on that side to bring service wire to that and then to the house.
All right. There any been any concerns or anything?
No, no concerns.
Please fire. Any butters or anybody has any issues with the pole?
Butters have been notified. Notices went out, there were like maybe one, I think that I didn't risk, that I didn't get a card back on, but no, no concerns.
No concerns?
I don't know if there's anybody here, but...
Anyone here want to speak about for or against the pole? Seeing none. Anybody have any motions?
I would move that we approve the order for pole locations as reflected in our...
Actually, prior to you making that motion, I would move that we close the public area.
Thank you. One second.
Made by Mike, seconded by Tim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dave.
I would now make a motion that we approve the order for pole locations as reflected in our binder.
Second.
All right. Made by Dave, seconded by Hal. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'd be opening the second public hearing. All right. So Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England Inc. request permission to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed thereon together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said companies may deem necessary to be owned and used in common by your petitioners in the following public way or ways. Would be Hemlock Street, pole number 8-84. National Grid requests to install a stub pole 8-84 and anchor across from existing pole 8 to take the place of an existing tree guy per request of the town. So wherefore they pray that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted joint or identical locations for and permission to erect and maintain poles, wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as they may find necessary, said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith marked Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England Inc., Plan Number 278-65752 dated 2/8/2019. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in above intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioners agree to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each side of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes.
So this pole wouldn't have any service wire on it or any electrical wire on it, it would just be to hold the pole line that's across the way back from pulling back the opposite way. So, and usually when we have, we have tree guys, we usually try and take care of them, especially if it's a danger, I'm not sure how much of a dangerous tree is, but we usually take them out and then if we can get a stub pole and an anchor with a guy on it, that's what we do to replace it. It's not a practice we use anymore, tree guys.
Okay. Same thing?
Same thing.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing on particular poll position.
Second.
Poll position.
Are we winning?
We're winning.
Made by Tim, seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone got a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion that we approve the poll petition as presented.
Second.
Made by Mike and seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While we're signing those, Economic Development Committee's here for an update and rezoning proposal discussion.
You guys wanna come on up? Hello. So we have a few things to discuss with you. First off, and it kind of centers around the entire conversation, we've been working with a few different developers that are proposing potential usage of some property within Douglas. The area in question, and we have some proposed drawings of what this might look like, so I'll put this around now. The area in question is...
I actually have those if you want me to pass them.
Awesome.
What I have, because I gave them bigger copies too.
Oh, okay, then.
And also, would you please identify yourselves?
Sorry, yes, Brad Maltz, Chairman of the Economic Development Committee.
Bob Manerick.
Member. So what we've been doing is the proposed area that is probably not as easy to see on the map is right behind Granite Tech. So if you're going right past the high school on the left-hand side, behind Granite Tech, there's basically a bunch of locked-in area, right? It's not accessible to the road or anything like that.
205 acres, six owners, nine houses.
205 acres?
205 acres total.
There is a potential to basically be able to utilize that entire area for, think of it as an industrial park. The initial usage of that, as you'll see on the map, is actually a million-square-foot facility. It's a million-square-foot warehouse.
That's basically the anchor, like Macy's and Auburn Mall. It's the anchor store for that facility.
What this would bring with it is the need to build in a road, obviously, to access the area over there, but it would also bring a few different things. Some, there's two pieces of conversation today. One of them is a rezoning discussion, and one of them is a water and sewer conversation. They kind of both tie into the same project. I'm gonna start with the rezoning, and then we can move over to the water and sewer piece of that. Within this area, there's a bunch of different properties. Some of them are partially zoned as residential, and the other part of some of those is zoned as industrial. We have actually put out a request to planning to basically state, can we actually transition the pieces of them from residential over to industrial to be able to complete the entire 205 acres? The area that is in question is, if you are looking at the three-building map, I don't know if you guys have, you have the three-building one, you'll see Lot 2, kind of that 300,000-square-foot Lot 2 area. That is the corner, roughly the area that things are right now zoned as residential, that we would like to try to see if we can transition over to an industrial zoning.
Matt, would that fall into spot zoning if we went with that, or?
No.
No?
Because you have, that's an existing industrial zone.
Okay.
So you're expanding a zone that already exists.
Okay.
So that is the first piece of the conversation. The second piece is, because this is on Davis Street, Route 16, you will see the access road. It might be a little bit hard to see on this map. It's almost easier to see on the small one, but if you look at either the three, if you look at the three Lot 1 building, it kind of wraps around the corner of it and then kicks out to Davis Street, if you're looking at that. It's a little, the colors kind of throw it off. The entrance to that proposed road would be somewhere next to Granite Tech, pretty much, under the eastbound side of Granite Tech. The discussion there is to bring in a facility of this size and potential other facilities after that, we'd need to find out if we can extend water and sewer down from the high school to be able to bring that down into that area so we can connect it up into this facility. We have actu... Go on.
That would be a condition of these warehouse people coming in, is water and sewer. We're working with the gas company to get gas, but our obligation would be water and sewer.
Right.
I think we have some folks...
Yep.
Sitting right behind.
We have water and sewer here. We've actually already had a joint meeting and actually brought this conversation up. Part of this conversation was, for us to be able to fit in any timelines, we had to bring this to a town vote within the May timeframe to see how this would fit into the capital budget and everything else within town. So there's a lot of things we want to make sure that's all over here today to find out what the steps are to make sure we can get this in the right timeframe.
How strong is the interest for the facility?
Extremely strong.
You get water and gas, it's going in.
Yeah.
Now water and sewer.
Water and sewer.
So where do we sit with water and sewer on that, on feasibility? If you get, you guys want to... Come on.
Come on up.
This would involve MassWorks grants, a lot of, lot of things to go on. Once we come into agreement that this is what is to be done, we're looking at a good tax revenue out of here. Millions, millions of dollars of tax revenue.
Most of the MassWorks grants, it has to be some money ponied up from the town to get us actually be considered for it, so...
Typically 50/50.
Yeah.
Credit some in-kind services too, I think they will...
Correct. It can be, doesn't have to be cash, it can be like services.
I think we did get some preliminary numbers on the water, the sewer, we didn't, we didn't...
Yeah, the sewer is gonna take some more engineering and stuff and to put some money into engineering to get the actual hard numbers. And depending on, I didn't look at your new...
Yep, yep.
...plan since our last meeting, but so you're just proposing right to here?
Coming from the high school directly down basically right past Granite Tech.
Because I know originally the conversation...
There is a conversation to basically...
That probably will be the case.
Yeah, so the discussion, just to expand this, was that potentially in the future, do we want to go and actually do a full loop if this type of an industrial thing would ever go to the edge of where 16 in Douglas meets up with Uxbridge? So bring this down to the Uxbridge line on 16 to enable future properties if we ever wanted to.
We're working on another 150 acres south of this 205, 350 total.
Not part of this discussion with this, with these people.
What is the distance from Douglas High to the Forest Drive way there?
Mile and a third, I believe.
Thank you.
To right there from where the end of the water and sewer line is?
That's my question essentially.
It's roughly 3,500.
Okay.
3,500.
That's it?
Yeah. It's about 6,000 to get down to that further spot.
To get down to the Uxbridge line roughly.
About 7,600 to the Uxbridge line, but to get to that other spot where you're originally proposing...
Gotcha.
...the exit road or whatever.
Okay.
So when bringing, if we were to bring, I know you're still doing engineering on the sewer side of it, but to bring the water down, if you're coming down that far and we're looking at trying to do MassWorks grants, does it make sense to just go the full distance all the way down through the development?
That's what I have recommended. If you're gonna go for grant money, you want to go for as much as you can, whether you go...
And less disruptive.
So the, I mean, you don't have to do the whole thing. You, I mean, if you only do half of it, they're only gonna get half the grant or whatever, but you want to go for the whole thing and, you know, get all you can.
Thought as do it once, not going...
That makes sense.
Yeah. Right, and you can do it in phases, so you can get the project going to here, and then if you do your loop road, you know, you continue on to finish the project.
This would be the entrance road, the road you're seeing. The loop road would be behind the building connecting to 16 near the Uxbridge line. That would complete the loop, that would be phase two, possibly phase three.
And what were the, do we recall what the costs were off of the bringing water down alone, understanding we're pending on sewer?
So water to about where they're talking, proposing here is roughly a million.
Okay.
A little more if you want to include full overlay for asphalt.
A Vega line would that be?
Full overlay for asphalt's probably another 175, 200,000.
All right.
That is state road all the way up there, Bob?
No, that whole road was handed over to the town after they did the high school project. So it's no longer a state road at all.
So, and I would assume to go all the way down and do the loop, we'd probably be looking at similar costs on top of that?
Well, the loop, I would believe, inside the project would be part of the...
That'll be discussed with the developer to see who would handle what there.
But going all the way down 16, it's about 7,600 feet, so that would be closer to 2.15 million.
That's if you go to the full border, unless you pull it back a little bit.
That's to go right, right, to go right to the border, and I think I looked at it around 6,000 where I estimated you'd probably...
Yeah, pull back a little off the border and save a little bit.
Okay.
And we figure...
1.7.
Just ballpacking, would you be looking kind of similar number sewer, higher, lower?
Sewer, it depends on where you went. Feasibility-wise, you're probably looking, sewer only going to about the entrance of that part there, and I didn't really look at the topography, but I think it is uphill a little here.
Goes up that way.
So you would be able to flow all this down, but things beyond that sewer-wise, you'd probably be looking at a pump station.
Yeah.
And that's where it gets a little more tricky, because the peak of that is roughly Monroe Street where Granite Tech's property begins. But you could probably get down close to the pipeline if you designed it correctly and you just, you have to shoot through that hill where the peak is, and you'd be deep at that, that peak with the sewer line. But that's where it gets a little trickier, where, but you could go gravity from there, so it wouldn't be nearly as expensive as if you had to put in a pump station or something in. But like I said, you'd have to look at that and kind of design it correctly to get as far as you can going gravity, and then if you needed to go down further with sewer, you'd end up putting in either a little forest main with E1 stations or some type of pump station.
Okay.
Any idea if a package treatment plant would be more or less expensive?
It would be more expensive than the, for a package treatment plant, there's all, all different designs and it depends on what you have, but then you're required to have an operator, so they would have to have a licensed operator, they'd have to be there.
Unless you, unless it was the town that...
Unless the town took it over, but...
But I'm just... Cost-wise, it's...
Permitting, everything else would cost you a fortune.
Okay, so it's not practical compared to what we...
Yeah, putting a sewer line and a pump station is a lot cheaper than another treatment plant.
Do we have a projected revenue or what the increase in taxes would be?
Not as of yet on this, no. That's TBD.
What timeframe are we looking?
Yesterday.
I was gonna say ASAP on this. They're pretty ready to move on this piece.
And how many property owners are there?
This would be...
Six. There's six, within the 205 complex, there's six.
Are they cooperating?
Oh, yeah. It's ready to go. They're waiting for us.
Because that always been a problem in some developments, is you never have, you had multiple property owners.
No, this one seems to have hit the right time.
We've spent three, four months on this.
Commend you guys.
Absolutely. Bob's on this one, so gotta give him credit.
Thank you. So what, what do they need from us tonight?
I had a question about the MassWorks grant. Does that cover the inside roadway? Can that be lumped into one, one whole project with the municipal side in, in the road we're going through the...
We'd have to run that by Bill. Bill would be on top of that, but I believe MassWorks would be involved, but it might be two separate grants.
Two separate, okay.
And we're going for a third grant with probably gas.
You know, if we could try to streamline and keep everything...
We'll keep them busy. It's MassWorks. I think the grant process, is it semi-annual for MassWorks? Yes, it's gonna be July timeframe. Coming up on its close date, end of August award date.
Which is why the May vote actually kind of fits into that timeframe.
Yeah.
Any preliminary indications? Anybody reached out to the state to see?
No.
Not yet.
Not yet. We're recent wheels, though.
Yeah.
We haven't seen...
We're working.
Opening minds, having persuasive conversation.
That just hit, yeah.
We haven't seen these, the new...
No, this is, this has been updated recently, yep.
The last as much as we had. Passed out.
So the interest you have is in the 1 million square foot?
The 1 million square foot warehouse.
Where they would buy up all the property though.
They'd buy up the whole?
They buy up the 205 up top, they build the 1 million. The road would be discussed who owns what, but how we finish that off, and then they would be able to then, after the million is done, they'd be able to go and see, do we want to do the two other bigger ones, or do we want to do small facilities around it? We can plan that out as a phase two or three.
There's other drawings with five buildings in there as well. The 1 million is the anchor.
Yeah, I think they have that also. You guys have the five also, right?
Yeah.
What is the company?
We don't know.
Don't know.
Shall they be named?
Yeah, shall be named.
Is it a, a well-known name?
It's a distribution warehouse. We're a lot of truck traffic, we're looking at...
They didn't tell us. We don't know, we're just working the development.
400, 500 jobs.
The trucks would be here, so that would be added revenue for the town.
You get excise off the trucks.
Yeah. If they have a garage here, we had, years ago, we had, we're looking on that big Walmart facility on the other end, on the Webster line, and they had a lot of trucks that we were going to pick up, but the state couldn't, didn't have MassWorks then, there was like four or five different pots of money, and it was hard putting them together.
Well, you gotta think for a million square foot, that's, that's on the larger side of a warehouse, so we don't know who it is though, we've been guessing, just like anybody here would.
Do they have a professional search group that you work with, or is it the company?
That's, that's the developer, that's their, we're just giving them the land.
Yeah.
They need a million-square-foot pad and a road and water and sewer.
And gas.
And gas.
And access to 146, which is why this is actually right. It's a well-known developer, is my understanding.
Yes.
Pretty much. It's one developer.
Well-known developer.
Is there gas up in that area?
There's a 12-inch, 20-inch high-pressure line right through it.
Yeah, the pipeline runs right through it.
You can see it on the map. The cross is over the road.
Through the cutout of the trees. Basically runs alongside, right behind Granite Tech for the most part.
Across the 16, runs right through, here's Granite Tech, runs right up. It's a 20-inch high-pressure line.
They could tap that anywhere along there.
That was my next word. I had no trouble tapping into that, right?
There's plenty of spots I would think that they could go up to.
Try and get a company, EverSource, or a CoGen facility, something to tap.
There's some options now, but we gotta keep working that to see what, what pops on that, so...
But we're working diligently on the gas end, it's just the town is responsible for the water and sewer.
So is there anything that they need from us, or is this just a briefing tonight?
I think what Bill Kundoff and I are looking for is direction from the board to allocate the time and energy to this.
Absolutely.
To the expense of other things if necessary, I mean, I think that just has to be understood. We'll emerge from the budget process on time with a presentable document, but thereafter, if this is a priority, then not much else will...
It's what we'd want you to be focusing your time on.
This is what we've been waiting for.
Yeah.
I think we're 120%.
This could pay for itself in three years.
And this also develops the area to future phases that we just haven't planned yet. That's the, that's the key here, right? So...
Well, I think it's the biggest thing that the residents of Douglas have been asking this board to try and get done.
Absolutely.
And this is the, probably the best, most viable option that's come our way, and it seems to be the most realistic.
Sounds like you got a sophisticated developer, you got property owners...
Yep.
...working together.
No, it's, it's the right time.
Any concerns from the guys on water and sewer? You guys feel good about it?
I'm sure that you guys were, that's the direction you wanted us to head down, and we talked a couple of different directions, so I know it's, if we make the decision, we gotta make sure it's right.
Well...
You know, not that we stop this and then they don't do it.
Well, any and every resource that you can spare towards this project, send it that way.
Do we have some rough name for the project that we're calling it, or?
We can nickname it whatever we want.
It's most interesting project, huh? How about that?
We'll let the VOS decide on the name.
We'll come up with a name.
Okay.
It may be a super-secret code name, but we'll...
That's perfectly all right.
We're just gonna call it Peeps.
Who's getting that time? Yeah, see? Are you getting happy about that? MassWorks. MassWorks, and would you say 50% usually?
Typically a 50% match.
I know Bob didn't meet with capital today, but I didn't, I didn't get to talk to him, see how that went, so...
You call, and they told me that you were gonna pay for it out of pocket, we didn't need to worry about it.
He's gonna do it, he'll take it.
We have to see what betterman fees he charges.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of work in the water system that really does need to be done over the course of the next 10 years, and I think we'd be looking for your assurances that the system expansion is something the system can handle, and it doesn't derail your other priorities for maintaining service on aging lines.
Right.
So that's, you know, we'll make sure we don't put a chrome muffler on a, on a rotten exhaust pipe, so...
What's wrong with doing that?
We're looking good with water. We're looking good with water. I think we have, we're about 220 a day, we're permitting for a little over a million.
So, okay. So, okay. At one point, it was gonna be lower, and we were worried about.
Well, the permit get low. We have the ability to provide that, but they dropped the permit down.
So we have, are we likely to increase that?
We'd have to, yeah.
Depending, I mean, we don't know what volumes they're talking for usage here, so.
It's a warehouse.
It's a warehouse, depends on what goes in.
It's not manufacturing, it's just a warehouse.
Right, so I don't see any issue there. The biggest thing is the sprinkler system, to have it fit.
And so with the treatment plant, we're, that's capable of about six hundred thousand a day, we're at like two-twenty.
You're just looking at sanitation facilities at a warehouse.
You just said sprinkler system, our fire chief just got really excited.
Some thought would have to be put into what their demand would be if we're a sprinkler system. Warehouses of this size that I've seen have a small tower next to them, a tank, open tank.
Well, that's a big expense on us. It's not the domestic, the water is, if you did the domestic, it's very inexpensive. It's, you gotta meet all the requirements for the fire protection, which that's where you get the size of the pipes and all the floors and.
Pretty some of them are going to waterless for fire suppression, using Halon-based systems.
An open warehouse, water's gonna be.
It tends to be electronic when you do Halon, usually, so it depends on what they're doing here.
There might be some other users, potential users along the way that would also tie in, wanna tie in?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
You know, get some more rate fares or.
Right.
All the industry right up sixteen.
There's gonna be many other properties, I think, that would be enabled by this type of a project. So we opened up that end of the town, which we haven't ever really opened that up, so.
And we're working with other developers on the other hundred fifty acres as well.
Bob, is there gonna be any problem with storage for the fire protection? And we talked about it up on North Street, we're gonna have a problem with it up there.
Well, we're not talking us to put up a storage tank for them for fire protection. That'd be something that would be set up with a valve or an altitude valve that it wouldn't be operating on a day-to-day basis. It would just be a backup that would supply there, kinda like Guilford had down there on that hill. So that wouldn't have any effect on our system. I mean, they may use our water to fill it, but it wouldn't be contributing to our system.
Cause I noticed, we didn't, they don't just have any more than two or three days of storage. That'd be a different.
Yeah, that doesn't factor into that.
And I think there's a lot more uses on sixteen than we've got time. But the town owns pretty much the whole right side all the way down the road from where it ends. The left side is only, there's maybe three or four houses, I think, on the left side going up there, so.
If you want more residential uses, you're welcome to bring water up through my neighborhood. We'd all sign. And sewer, bring sewer up too. Bring it all up.
I think we've got water up there.
We do have water, actually, yeah.
No sewer.
You can bring that, if you wanted to.
D E P wouldn't allow us to, actually.
Oh, see?
Yeah, it's a wake-up zone.
I'll need to talk to them.
Do you need a warehouse?
Yeah.
We'll get you water soon.
Have you seen the amount of stuff my kids collect? They need a warehouse, believe me. Is there a possibility with Farmers Home or at EDA money too, or?
EDA is always an option, as you know. SEDS is a rolling quarterly process. They look to give away their money, but there is a match, there is a sort of fifty-fifty match. But I believe you can use state funds to leverage the local match on the federal program. I'm pretty sure you can. So that's a more involved process, SEDS, applications.
We're also a Farmers Home administration area, I think, too.
Are you a Department of Agriculture designated zone?
We did, we did.
That's who you used for the treatment plant.
Was that?
We might have, out of the rural water, we might have bounced out because of the median average.
Yeah.
Got the SRF money? Is that, we got that for the?
No, you did SRF and the RDA for the treatment plant. But you might've got bounced, based on the median, the median average.
Yeah.
So, just to circle back to maybe the early part of the discussion, this is zoned properly except for that area surrounding Lot Two?
Yeah, there's basically, it's a piece of, the way it works out, there's approximately three properties that, one of them is partially zoned industrial, partially zoned residential. We wanna complete that, all is industrial. There's two other properties that are residential, but that, that are part of this makeup that we wanna convert. A piece of one of them to industrial, and I think the whole other one into industrial.
Okay.
And they are all on board, all the owners, so.
And they're shooting, we're shooting for May?
We're shooting for that May meeting.
We wanna get on the May vote.
We have to get that done by the May meeting.
And planning's on, they're on board with.
Planning and Bill, they've been discussing this.
The planning board should be the next meeting it'll be addressed.
Yeah, it got moved, it was supposed to be in the last one. I think it missed the agenda, had to get moved to the next one or something like that. So we're on the, definitely on the next one for that.
What about bonding for the town's portion of the cost? Would that be on the town meeting as well? May we reserve a spot for?
Well, we can certainly put a spot on for it. I, Dick gives me pause. Where you are right now, budget flexibility-wise. Would've been better three years from now, when things are rolling off, but I guess we just have to look at what the total cost is gonna be.
Twenty-three L project. Would we have a better understanding of, like, the sewer cost being brought into this, or a better understanding of the cost by our next meeting prior to town meeting? So we can reserve putting that on there?
Yeah, we'll put a placeholder on for it.
If necessary.
You don't have to use the authority just because town meeting gives it.
Right. Well, we could also hold a special, this is important enough that we hold another special town meeting if we need to, to make it happen. I do.
All right.
An ice cream.
Really?
Great cream day. I don't wanna miss this opportunity. We can't talk about that. Somebody didn't wanna put it on the agenda. You have a great job you guys are doing, really.
That was me.
Well, to the extent that the planning board wants our blessing, I would make a motion that we, in our strongest possible terms, ask them to work favorably towards changing the necessary zone in order to further put this project on a fast track.
Spoken like an attorney, second.
That's been already made a motion on. We're working on that. Forty-three D is what you're talking about?
No, I'm just giving the big wink and nod to.
He's helping us just get them to go.
Okay. We're working on the fast track on that section forty-three D. We've already identified parcels we need.
Yep.
For a quick approval process.
Was this already in the forty-three D house, remember?
We had two areas. We had the golden area, and then we had pine.
Yes, that's right.
Were the two areas.
Yeah. I wasn't sure, I was hoping maybe that was.
I believe the Webster one called East, that's coming out. It's not necessary anymore. This one will replace East.
So you're working with.
I should say West.
So you're working with, is it community development on that? Is that the office that handles it?
I believe so.
So I think you got a motion on the table from Tim and seconded by Dave. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Strong aye, too. Strong aye.
Aye.
Capital aye. No dots here.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Appreciate it all.
Keep it posted, let us know what you need.
We will do. It sounds like we'll maybe be back on in the April timeframe then for an update.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Item number three. On my agenda that's missing something. Somebody being saucy.
I'm looking at the board's policy.
I'm like, what did I miss now?
Huh?
I'm looking at the board's policy. I don't know where this authority comes from.
Use the Chevy. Some people just refuse to pick up their pen for certain things.
The town administrator bears primary responsibility for coordinating the agenda. The chairman shall have the ultimate authority and the determination of the meeting.
That's what I thought.
You were for Ice Cream Day, I was for Ice Cream Day. Was there another party invitation sent out we weren't made aware of?
I guess. What you didn't see is the special Suzanne Kane bylaw. How are these two pillars of responsibility being overruled? I'm not.
Because they wanted me to change the agenda after it was set. And I said no.
No.
Thank you.
Shattering the hearts of children everywhere. Sounds like new business. I think it does sound like new business.
Sounded like new business to me, but.
It's gonna happen.
Who I know?
Stay tuned.
As chairman, I remember trying like hell to put different things on the agenda, and once that agenda's set, it's very difficult. You have to move mountains in order to have that changed.
This, you know what it is? I figured it out, is that we've tried coercion, everything else. It's just gonna be downright bribery. There'll be dark chocolate involved.
Dove.
See? Well, come and be like, there's a bag of these Dove candies for you, if. All right, so we are now on to item number three. The Building Facilities Manager/Highway Working Foreman Job Description and Compensation Change Proposal and Possible Votes.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet, I included a fiscal note to document the costs associated with a change in our personnel system. Right now, we have an employee, a forty-hour-a-week employee, splits his time, twenty hours between building facilities manager and twenty hours at the highway department, at two separate rates of pay, one of which is set at, on the management table, and the other is set on the part-time table. They're both incorrect. He's a forty-hour employee, he's entitled to overtime after forty. So we thought we would try to rectify that situation, basically give him a title within the highway department that included the responsibilities of the building manager, and try to keep his pay above, just a little bit above what he's getting now. So we don't wanna cut his pay for taking that responsibility. The proposal in the fiscal note that you may have noticed is that we would move the employee to the highway department at the top step for a labor operator. So PM five, step ten. Now, when I did the math out, comparing it to what he's making today, he actually would have taken a small loss for about three of the next five years because of the way the coal is moved through the management table and just, it's more gobbledygook than it's worth talking about. One of the things that was added in the last year, it's brand-new responsibility, and the employee volunteered for it, was to coordinate all of our safety programs in compliance with OSHA regulations. So this employee has taken on all of the training responsibilities, as well as the safety monitoring responsibility for the town. In the fire department, our safety officer makes a two-thousand-dollar stipend, so I thought we would do here is put a two-thousand-dollar stipend in for the OSHA coordinator position because it doesn't have to tie to a person. It could tie to the department, and then in the future, the responsibility could be assigned to different people. But the stipend would actually basically be the equivalent of a step, basically, for the employee for taking up the extra responsibility, as well as maintaining the existing responsibility, which is extraordinary because we have a lot of buildings. And when it snows, care is taken to make sure all of our buildings are accessible and safe and all the rest of it, at the same time as individuals, you know, plow's all night and comes basically to his second job and takes care of the building. So I would look for your, I would ask for your approval. I would come back to you in two weeks, or whenever you meet next. I think, I think you have to meet in two weeks just to finish the budget with a rewritten job description. You already approved the building facility manager job description rewrite. I'd be taking that and merging it with a working foreman concept, which would just be when, when the superintendent is out of town, this individual would be the person in charge on the site, on the work site, when the superintendent isn't there. This individual would have management authority over the situation, and that gets us in a good situation for him.
I'm comfortable with that.
It makes good sense. It certainly is a situation that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, this is kinda languished for a while, and probably the biggest part of my last two weeks now has been unbundling many years of Band-Aid approach to how we squeeze employees in and how we pay them, what we designate them, whether they're part-time, full-time stipend. So we've really had to sort that out on a chart of accounts. Gene's made a lot of changes, and so this year's budget will reflect that. This is probably the biggest change, but not the most impactful in terms of the budget.
This particular employee has a tremendous amount of gratitude from this board. Should have.
More about that later.
Anybody have a motion for this?
Make a motion that we approve Matt's plan and relating to the building facilities, highway compensation change proposal. How's that for a?
Second. I was trying to think of how to word you.
No, I just went with the memo.
That was.
That was horrendous, but you know what we meant.
Yeah.
Like Matt's plan.
That was the gist of it?
Yeah.
So, all right, so it was made by Tim, seconded by Dave. Is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. Building permit fees, discussion of proposed changes.
Mr. Chairman, this is for distribution and discussion only this evening. The new building official has done quite a bit of homework in comparing us to our neighboring community, so that would be the last page in your, in the packet for this item. On the reverse side is a comparison of Douglas, Oxford, Uxbridge, Sutton, Webster, Northbridge, and Grafton, and the many different fees associated with the table of fees for building permits of various types. This is, top copy is just a clean copy. The second page, wherever there's red print, the change that the building official is requesting is in the far right-hand column. So he would go from, for instance, a multifamily condo per unit, a four-hundred-dollar base plus ten dollars a square foot. He's suggesting changing that to eight dollars per thousand based on an ICC valuation. So that's the International Code Commission. You know, the building code has a formula for calculating value. That's a preferred approach these days because it takes a lot of discretion out, and it puts a formality into it. So these would all represent building fee increases. And the additional revenue is part of this year's budget discussion because, first of all, we think we're leaving revenue on the table, and second of all, this department has been slowly whittled away to the point where it doesn't have any flexibility to do anything. And I think we need to be able to spend a little bit more in there with good conscience. One way to do that is to increase their revenue potential.
So there's only one?
Next time you wanna take this up, we'll have the building official here, probably not alone with.
So I see he's only got one removal, which is the temporary above-ground pool. Says remove. This is actually smart.
So he's got a couple of removals here, too, on the multifamily. He wants to cover it under a new home.
Yeah. Sounds like he's just making it cleaner, too.
Yeah.
Okay. So could we have him in on the?
Yes.
On the next meeting?
And I think at the same time, we'll do a quick briefing that evening on electronic permitting and cost structure and consumer, you know, customer-friendly side of that. It's more of an obligation going forward. We would need to know that. It's a software license. It's not inexpensive. It's been demonstrated a couple of times, it's fantastic. It really does make it much easier for the development community to interact with us. In order to justify that expense, I think we should, we should be raising a little bit more money.
Yeah, 'cause I have some questions on that one. 'Cause I mean, I think it would make sense to, you've got a very powerful website, to be able to embed this into it would be huge, but it'd also look to be like burning permits and stuff like that, to embed the fire permitting into it as well.
So this permitting software company, they started off just doing building code, but it was so complex that when they were done, they realized we could do any permit fee, any application can be brought into this umbrella, so we could automate a lot of our processes and, you know, organize things in a database. It would call for inspections, you know, it'd set the inspection date. So even Suzanne, if she wanted to, could do liquor licenses this way, schedule the mandatory inspection, yearly inspection. There's a lot of power in it, and that's the appeal of it.
Yeah.
We can tie data into our GIS.
'Cause you could actually turn our website, if you get the fees, like including your dog licensing and everything else, it could almost be a virtual town hall.
So that is all integrated?
So Webster just went this way, they just installed the system, so if you're curious, you can pretend to be Joe or Bob the Builder and navigate around with their system and see if you like it.
That would be helpful to justify anything, aside from what our neighbors do. You know, private services and streamlining operations and interaction with town government.
Well, eventually, we have to modernize. Like, you're dealing with a whole new generation of people that are coming up through, that are gonna be into the building, and they do not wanna come down to town hall or interface with people. They just wanna point and collect and go do their job. Cool. Is there anything else on that matter? Are we? All right, so we have a special employee designation board of health and possible votes.
We've done a few of these already. We've done a few of these already. The Special Municipal Employee Designation under the ETHES Code opens the door for people who serve on certain boards and commissions to be able to have relationships or to make representations in front of other boards other than the board where they serve and also affects their ability to enter into contracts for certain types of work. So there are some people who clearly should be covered. Now, being a town under 10,000, the law says the Board of Selectmen is automatically designated special employee. So you already have that status. The Board of Health is one of those places where people who do engineering work, we have people who dig in the ground and they have a number of potential conflicts. This doesn't take conflicts away. It just, it provides a pathway for disclosure and other things to allow that person to earn a living while they are also volunteering for the town. So this board needed it because we're having a conversation right now about, because the untimely passing of our septic engineer, some, a couple of months ago, that position has come open, there's been interest and people have felt like they were limited. They weren't able to go after the position because they already served in another capacity with the town. So this brought attention to it, so we'd like to try to do it.
And a motion on it?
I move to designate Board of Health members as Special Municipal Employees on the Massachusetts General Law Chapter 238A.
Excellent, Dave.
It's made by Dave and seconded by Hal. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
DCR Announcement to Purchase Land and Possible Votes. They're back again.
They're back. They are back.
The claws are back into Douglas. Yeah.
So basically, it's really not a vote, but...
Well, we could send a letter in opposition.
Exactly. That's why I put possible votes down. So what you do is you read the letter and that's announcing that they're going to do it. If you choose not to, you don't read the letter and you vote to send a letter.
Sorry. Could you repeat that?
All right. We had this instance once before where DCR was buying land and the board decided to hold off making the announcement and talking to DCR about the fact that they were purchasing so much land. So what you're doing is they're buying the land. They want you to announce that they're buying the land.
Really?
And then, yes. And then if you choose that you want to hold off and talk to them again, then we won't read the letter and we'll go that route.
Who owns the land now, do we know?
The paperwork is in your packet.
It's in your accessories.
You got the maps here.
So it's producing what, a half mix of like small dollars? It's only assessed for what, 60 or 70,000?
Fifty, it's not.
Less than that? Forty-nine?
Forty-nine, three.
But we get much less from the state, of course.
I think we should pay as much attention to their request for an announcement as they did to our request for money out of the Forest Fund to pay for Code Red or fix Ridge Trail or do anything else we've asked them to do.
I mean, there's really nothing that we can do. We can't send a letter of opposition to it, but I would say, I agree with you.
You did. You did once before.
Let's do that. Well, maybe we can trade it a little bit.
I wouldn't. They still owe us a meeting that we've been sitting here holding our breath waiting for.
No, but I like what Hal's going, right? Can we leverage this in any way? We know they're averse for more land.
We have affairs for more revenue on pilot, too.
Let's own the whole town and pay nothing for it if they have their way.
How hard would it be to draft a letter of opposition requesting a meeting before we move forward on any of it?
I don't think you have to say, just say...
Here Commissioner, au contraire, mon frere, sign the Board of Selectmen. No, I don't know. We can find a more intelligent way to say it, which would be that, you know, given our disappointment with you not being responsive to the town's needs, we'd hope that maybe this is an occasion for us to come together and have a meeting of the minds.
I can draft a letter. Does anyone have a problem with me drafting a letter too?
I'd probably defer to the town administrator. With all due respect.
Spell-checking you maybe.
May the record reflect them getting an icy glare from the chairman.
I just...
Well, let's see if we can make a positive out of this, that's all.
The only thing that ever, like, you know, I'll go on record saying it, the only thing that ever gets their attention is something extreme. And then all of a sudden, they realize that Douglas exists again. And I mean, I'm, my frustration with them has been there for a while between pilot and their lack of willingness to have meetings and then their lack of willingness to release funding to do something simple like Code Red, that I'm of the mindset of saying, we have a ladder truck, let's park it at the end of Wallem Lake Road again and say, do we have your attention now?
We were able to achieve the single closing and we did it largely through the methods I think you're referring to, but I think Mr. Davis's suggestion really, let's see if we can get something positive out of this.
Well, yeah.
Before we drop the boom again, let's see if we can get them to come to the table.
That's fine.
I'm not, I don't want them taking, you know, one acre, let alone 14, and it gets to the point where it really isn't about the money anymore. Whatever we're collecting in taxes, I know is not a huge amount of money. We know we're going to get less in pilot funds.
No, it's just one of those things that it's, it's about time that they realize that we're one of the communities under the jurisdiction that they serve. They work for us at the end of the day. State government works for us and they need to start showing Douglas the respect that it deserves. And if they're not going to, then we'll start demanding it. Because I think that we need to send yet another, we'll send the letter of opposition to this, to your point, Hal, for negotiation.
I don't know if you, just say it's under consideration and we'd like to discuss, rather than to say we're opposed to it, under consideration and should be, we'd like to discuss this and with other issues.
And can we throw in the phrase, and perhaps the annual meeting we were promised would be a good venue to discuss it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that works. I'm just done rolling over for the state, sorry.
Does the land have any other potential use for...
Oh, look at its way up. It's on the sticks, that's, there it is.
Yeah.
So it's off the trunk line a little bit.
Perhaps when they do come in, we could invite our state senator and state rep to come down and have a chat about it as well. That's all I got.
You can say it was tabled to be taken up with other issues that would be, should be addressed with by way of a meeting.
You can move to lay it on the table and you have to take it up next time.
Yeah. We're very busy, you know?
They'll, eventually they'll do it on their own anyway.
Well, we had, you know, there was sort of an informal, if not formal, promise not to take any more land than Douglas without the town's consent.
Yeah.
So I don't know where, you know, where the paperwork is on that, but that was certainly what they had.
I recall that.
Yeah.
That was part of their last taking was the agreement of no more without us...
Was that before Sullivan or was that...
That was part of Sullivan.
So in that correspondence, we might be able to find a juicy quote to it in the letter.
Yeah, it's there.
Nothing on that, by the way, right?
No comment.
Yeah, I think that's good way to end it.
I agree with you. Whatever you say, we'll put your stamp on it. If you get too fired up. All right, so we don't need to do anything off of this one right now, right? Number six, we're good. We can move on.
Yeah.
Second reading of the website disclaimer and privacy poly, policy. Any changes since the last one?
No changes.
I am still exercising my right to invite the public to please see the policy that is on the website and defer to it if they have any questions. Item number eight, review warrant article for annual town meeting and special town meeting.
Can I just say it's not on the website right now?
Uh-oh.
But if they want it, they can ask me for it and I can send it to them.
Yes, if you'd like to see the copy, then please...
Because it is a draft copy.
Gotcha. All right, so see the policy, make the request of Suzanne Kane.
Thank you.
Thank you for correcting me on that, Suzanne. All right, so on to the warrant review for the annual and special town meetings. Why am I having trouble finding it? Because I probably threw it somewhere.
What's the animal control bylaw?
We don't know yet. Uh, we were asked that, to put a placeholder. They want to make some changes to the current bylaw. From what I understand, yes, we're, we're at the warrant, do you, oh, do you need Matt? They're going to be taking out the current bylaw proposing and from what I understand, it's like 36 pages right now, which also needs to be reviewed by town council.
Yeah, I spoke with the animal control officer and he's taking anything that's out proprietary to the town and following it strictly to Mass. General Law as it pertains to animals and licensing. And then he's making modifications to it because he wants it to reference the Town of Douglas, not Mass. General Law, so that way the town gets any fees or fines that are associated with it as opposed to the state. I think if I gathered that correctly.
Sounds correct.
I haven't received it yet.
How about the tree study finding?
Yeah, let's go ahead with that.
That is with John Furno, the, the tree warden. And Adam are together on that one. Again, the, these are placeholders. I haven't received any paperwork yet.
Article three, salaries of elected officials.
Stuff that I have is actually in the warrant, in the, in the, you know, the, the body of the warrant. Everything else is, is going to be empty. Just the placeholder.
So I shouldn't ask you about Article 23 yet?
What's that one? Wait a minute.
It's blank too.
Oh, exactly.
Can you talk about Article 25? I'm just teasing you.
Oh, okay.
There's 28 of them.
Yeah, it's a full day. That's...
This is going to be a long meeting.
And there might be another one if, after today, there's going to be another one.
Do we need to vote to add another one or...
No, because right now, right now, the warrant is, is open. You've closed it at your next meeting. If anything comes up after that, you'll have to reopen the warrant, insert it or take out and then close it again.
Can I go on record saying Article Three, we put an amendment in there that says salaries of elected official, quote, "not enough"?
You want to have tomatoes thrown in?
I could, actually. It'd be fun. Should I turn it? Well, that's the Airbnb thing, right? Article 11, the short-term rental?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, well, that looks good.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Fifteen, reduction of FinCom, FinCom membership.
That is a question that someone had said that they were talking about it because they're having problems with quorums. I did reach out to Pam to see if that was still a concern, if they wanted to put it on. She has not been able to talk to the board yet. They might be discussing it tonight.
Because they can't get a quorum.
Yes, they do have a quorum tonight. So that is, again, just a placeholder.
All right. Okay. I don't have any other questions on this, then we can review it in more detail next meeting.
And then you did see the special also. That one has a few more items on it, but Gene, Gene would be the one that would, there might be a couple coming off of that one.
And we can go over the special at the next meeting as well?
Yes.
Works for me.
All right. Perfect timing, I guess, that Mr....
Wojcicki's...
Wojcicki's left because he doesn't like being here for these things.
I need to recuse myself as well?
Yes.
Yes, you do.
Should I leave the room?
No, you don't have to leave the room. You just can't vote.
Stand in the corner?
Yes, I want you to stand in the corner. Face the corner over there. Put your fingers in your ears and go la, 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 the whole time while we talk.
I just read it.
Oh.
Can feel the love, Mr. Hughes.
All right, where the heck is it?
All right, after your executive session minute, meeting, rather, you voted to make the changes to the Exhibit A of Mr. Wojcicki's contract.
Do you want me to read it all out?
You can if you want. So I've made the changes in, in the, in the document, the MOU.
Yeah, because the real change is under Step Three, as I recall, right? Because he's Step One.
It was Step Three and we added a Step Four, which is basically just making it clear as to the direction that the board wants to go in.
Yes, so Step Three, increasing his salary to $120,000 prorated effective January 2019 through June 30th, 2019, with Step Four at $120,000 effective July 1st, 2019.
Right. And according to his contract, that means that if the other departments get a COLA, he also gets a COLA on top of that. So the COLA is not included in this amount.
Okay.
He did sign, so he is, he is all right with it. And I need a vote for you to ratify your decision from your executive, your meeting.
I would move that we ratify the amendment to the employment agreement as reflected in our binder between the Town of Douglas and the town administrator.
Motion was made by Dave, seconded by Tim. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You decide it, but Mike abstaining.
You can abstain, Mike.
Why do you abstain? Mr. Chairman.
But you recused yourself, so you're really not here.
Yeah, Mike, you're not here.
I haven't been here for the entire meeting.
Let the record reflect that Mike Hughes was not here during the last agenda item. All right, so we're on to approving minutes.
When you get to the executive session minutes, I'm not sure about releasing item four A, not four A. I don't know about four B. Can you look at it? But you will release four C. Uh, 14C, I'm sorry.
Four or 14?
14.
14. You know, if there was a ice cream day in Douglas...
We haven't got any business yet.
We're allowed to throw potshots throughout the entire meeting, though. I believe that there is a bylaw for that. You're still my favorite, Suzanne.
Thank you. I'm the only one. 14B is the only one I'm questioning. Do we, do they release that or does it stay?
Well, you wouldn't release A or B.
Right, A, I know, B, no. Okay, C, you can release.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. And then under executive session, releasing only item 14C.
We have two dates here, Mr. Chairman.
For both dates. It's made by me and seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? None? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Your report, Mr. Wojcicki.
Mr. Chairman, item A in my report is to announce that a prestigious award has been given to one of Douglas's town employees. Adam Furno has been designated a Thomas Green Public Service Award winner by the Worcester Research Group. And is a recognition of the fact that he goes above and beyond the call of duty and always does, is, is, you know, completes his requirements with great enthusiasm and treats people well and is an active member of the community. Those were the four hallmarks of an outstanding employee. The award was not open to department heads or management level people. It was open to people who come to work every day and work for their paycheck. So we're very happy with Adam. This is a Worcester County-wide, central mass-wide award, only three, four are given every year. So we'll have further announcements when the event occurs where Adam be recognized. But there are some really excellent people have won this award before, so he's in great company.
It's well deserved, Adam.
I also want to thank our, our department heads because we all, everyone pulled together to support the nomination. So there are a lot of letters of support for him. Item number B, in your email, I'll be distributing to you this week fiscal notes, which are just basically my attempts to keep up with updating everyone on what has been changed in the budget and why from last year. So where are the moving items? I think that's a best practice. You saw one example tonight with, with the explanation of the fiscal impact surrounding the change with Adam's compensation and, and work description. So I have quite a few of them following the John Chaffee rule. If it's more than a page, I'm not going to read it, so I'm trying to keep you to one page, but when you have questions about the budget, it might be a quick reference.
Are you saying we're, we're on the same level as Senator Chaffee?
Yeah.
Wow.
He was my boss, you're my boss.
Mr. Bowman, I'm fond of that, that saying.
That's true.
Lastly, I forget which stat, I've got to go back next door, so I'm hurrying a little bit. Not lastly, in the back of your packet, behind tab...
Eleven.
Eleven is the mandatory notice. Eleven, is the mandatory notice on the chapter forty-four, section thirty-one D, from me to you and to the finance committee of an increase in the snow and ice threshold up to three hundred thousand dollars. That represents a one hundred and forty-five thousand dollar increase over what was budgeted. We were, at this point, blowing through money very rapidly after that last storm. Seems like the weather may have finally turned for us, it's not my wood, but this is, this is where we are, going up from two twenty-five up to three hundred thousand. Sixteen inches of snow is a lot of, it just ate it right up. And then lastly, I'm gonna distribute what is, I consider to be, a draft, capital D, capital R, capital A-
Lowercase t.
F T, draft, uh, but it's the rough outlines of a budget using the format that, that we use for the FinCom flyer, which I know the chairman hates, uh, but it is the ultimate product. And it's a lot easier, frankly, for me to print out than the spreadsheets with every last line I have on it.
I'm not gonna make more work for you, Matt.
I think what you'll notice as you parse through it is there are a couple of major ticket items, one of them is that, per the police chief's request, we're trying to accommodate buying all those cruisers next year to skip the new model year. Uh, we are engaging in an extensive forestry management planning and cutting activity starting next year, and may go on for three years. National Grid has gotten very aggressive about reminding us that those are our trees and their lines. And when our trees fall on their lines, there's an issue. The rough estimate is that we have about five thousand seven hundred trees in this town that need to be taken out, that the town owns, that are dead and that threaten a roadway or a set of power lines.
It's a lot of firewood.
That's a lot of wood. And so, um, John's gonna need some help with that in his budget.
Good Eagle Scout project.
Is that a change in policy?
Yeah, it's been coming in, yeah, they've, they've been more accommodating in the past, you know how they'll cut half the tree as long as the threat for the wires has been removed?
Yeah.
It's just getting to be an awful big expense for them. Their argument is correct, the, those are the town's trees.
A lot of the other leaseholders that sit on that same pole are pushing back.
We're not cutting state trees, I hope.
Gosh, I hope not.
Well, Long Sixteen, if there's, is that an area that would be due cutting, that's all pretty much state forest, so.
But Sixteen has a very wide right of way. And you thought Sixteen was a gift to you from Commonwealth?
From what?
From the Commonwealth.
Yeah.
Sixteen's not a state road anymore. So that right-of-way, extensive as it is-
So the con, the state forest doesn't-
Comes up to the property line as a right-of-way.
The right-of-way, right.
They just trimmed it all last year anyways, when they did their road over.
I would put a flag next to technology and the building department, so the building inspection department, those departments are not finished yet. We're very happy with our technology consultant, he's done a wonderful job of finding a way to be much more cost-effective for us. But we are at the cusp of having to do some work.
The Windows ten update.
We need a Windows ten update, we have a server upgrade, you know, we have three smaller servers that really need to be pulled into one, and the hardware does cost some money, and it's labor, it can be labor-intensive getting off the old stuff, so, uh, just wanna make sure we set aside appropriate amount of money.
Have we had the IT director reaching out to Microsoft regarding their municipalities purchasing programs?
I'm sure he's aware, and I'm, I'll wanna check with him, he, he works on Wednesdays. The only other thing I would like to, the board to think about, is I think it's the last major revision I would make to this document, is, uh, getting back to personnel policy. We have department head-level employees who are, many of whom are at step ten, have been at step ten for a while. I think it's time to revisit their responsibilities and make sure that people who have a similar level of responsibility are earning similar compensation, and, uh, we have to think about retention as an issue too. So, well, we'll be pulling together, the wage studies are all over the, the list is up, so we can pull this together for your packet. But it, it may be time to look at, uh, some of the management compensation, just because it's been, it's been stuck for a very long time. But I have an open mind, you know, we've been trying to talk this through, and I got some, I need to spend a little bit of time with Attorney Mazer on the Pay Equity Act ramifications for us.
Can't have somebody sitting stale for a long time, like, you hit that top step, you gotta do something.
No, I mean, I, you know, I, I think at some point, it's not, there's a great phrase, I forget exactly how it's, it's not really about the money, it's not what, what people are telling you what you're worth, they're telling you that you're worthy, and that's, uh, an important signal to send to people who participated in the town when wages were frozen for a long time.
So you're saying it's not compensation, it's value?
Yeah. We have a fantastic team here, and so it would be, it's in our best interest to keep it together.
I would agree.
But I'd like you to look through the budget and, and see where you come out. Jean and I will, will be sitting down very shortly to review the, the free cash situation as well.
Okay.
And where we are, what flexibility we have for capital. My hope for a capital budget is between four hundred, five hundred thousand. And try to leverage that with grants as best we can, try to get about a million dollars worth of projects. The one difficulty we have is the Cedar Street Bridge, which we won a five hundred thousand dollar grant to replace that bridge, but it could end up being an eight hundred thousand dollar project. Because if the abutments are sour, and they probably are, because they're so old, we'll have to completely replace the bridge with a, a concrete box cover arrangement, and that, that just gets to be expensive.
Makes sense that you're marking the additional three hundred thousand.
Yeah, well, I mean, if it's not too much, we could use some of our chapter ninety funds. I'm just very reluctant to use a whole year's allocation of chapter ninety without doing any paving. We've really been struggling with all the freeze-throw cycles that we've had to, it's just, it's gonna be time to pave some, some of these roads.
We kinda have to, because it's-
Yeah, the roads are really taking a beating.
There was an article actually saying it was the worst that the roads have been in thirty years, just because of how the winter was, it was just mild and then deep freeze and then mild, and that's just a recipe for thawed holes. Some of them, I think, are sinkholes.
So, I wanna, I don't, I didn't send those around, I thought I was waving it around, threatening to send it to you.
Do you still have the spreadsheet mechanism that we'd used prior to the override?
Oh, yeah, that's what, that's what generates this.
Okay, could I get a copy of that?
You can get that back if you want.
Yeah, 'cause I know Mr. Bonin likes this. Me, not so much.
I only drive to this, 'cause at the end of the day, this is where I press the print button, and it goes to the public, so I try to make sure it's tight.
What is easier for you?
Well, now, further ado, I gotta go next door to FinCom, so I can make the same presentation to them.
Thank you.
Is it right? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so any old business? Seeing as none, I have some new business.
Of extreme importance, too, right?
Extreme importance, that I will be seeing on the agenda. Hey, Pam? So while I was out gathering signatures for my reelection attempt, I actually met a couple of very charming young ladies that had asked if, uh, it would be at all possible to utilize our authority as selectmen to make May eleventh Douglas Ice Cream Day, because they have such a great love of ice cream. And I thought that if there was anything that we could do, that seems like the most worthwhile cause that we've done in quite a while. So I would be putting that on the agenda for a motion and possible votes for May eleventh to become Douglas Ice Cream Day.
It'll be on the next agenda.
It will?
May eleventh.
And I would probably be looking to see if perhaps someone can reach out to the ice cream lady and things like that, maybe that way they can recognize it, maybe a chance for them to get some additional revenue as local businesses, or do something charitable towards the residents.
So are you gonna write a proclamation?
I will.
Okay.
And will you be bringing ice cream into our next meeting?
I could, would you like me to?
Absolutely.
All right.
I think if we're going to vote on it, we should probably-
You write the proclamation, and I'll print it out and sign it, I'll get nice and fancy.
Is your election campaign subsidizing the ice cream for the day, or?
It is not, I, I will pay that out of my, uh, out of my pocket.
I think the vice chairman may be subsidizing the ice cream for the next meeting, anyway.
You'd like this?
I think I'd like to subsidize that, as long as there's no outrageous requests from the board, I think.
How about we split it?
Deal.
All right.
No one has ever fought for the right to buy me ice cream, huh?
Massachusetts is the number one per capita ice cream state.
I remember that.
So, well, here's the big thing about ice cream, I do not care for it myself.
Wow.
Wow.
I, I can explain why, I, I can explain, I, I'm all for people eating ice cream, and it actually provided me my house and everything else growing up, my father was an executive with Briars and Seal Test, so, as a child, we got ice cream overload, to the point where it was no longer like this neat treat, 'cause it was just there all the time. So it'd be like if your dad's the pizza guy, all of a sudden you're not gonna like pizza.
My first job was at a pharmacy that had a soda fountain, and after I left, they took it out, I think I bankrupt the soda fountain portion of the drugstore. And my friends were coming in for Sundays.
All right, that's all I have, is there any other new business?
Could I make a request for new business? Is that possible?
Usually if it's something that's not on our agenda, you'd wanna do that under citizens forum, where anything that's not published on the agenda, but-
At the beginning of the meeting.
At the beginning of the meeting, but I'll, I'm feeling charitable, I'll entertain it, what do you got?
I have hearing aids, but my, my hearing's really poor, and, and like Matt, when he's, his back's facing me, I can't hear him. So I'm, I'm requesting a, but, you know, if you guys could budget for an improved system. Like at work, they have these mics that, you know, go around your neck, and if each of you have it, it goes and ties into the sound system, no matter if anyone is in the room, they can hear exactly what you're saying.
We discussed that at one point.
They're working on it.
Yeah, I think that Douglas Cable Committee, actually, they have the funding for, for that, I believe, where it comes out of the-
I wonder if in the interim, just having more microphones up here would help? Is there kind of sharing microphones, I don't know if it's possible?
It's possible?
Sometimes when you guys talk low-
Right, yeah.
It, it just, it's just not enough, especially like I'm writing a fund, and I'm, I've got my hearing aids, and they help, but it's just not enough, you know, so if there's anything you can do, I'd really appreciate it.
Well, we've already started, I think, well, it's a good thing maybe to put on the agenda, see, get a report back from the-
Yeah, I will, but it was brought up at a previous, not our meeting, but I think the, um-
Was it Cable Committee?
No, um, Planning Board had a meeting, they had a lot of people in the audience, and, and it was brought up that, that it was hard to hear.
It was brought up a lot during the two and a half override discussions, too.
It was, yes.
So it, it, it's a known issue, and I believe that Cable is working on it, but we'll do, we'll put it on the next agenda for a update.
The lovely young lady that's running the cable back there has been nodding, saying yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not a problem.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
It was made by Tim and double-seconded by Mike and Dave, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.